We'll call the City Council meeting in City Eureka Springs to session. Clerk Colerone, please.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Joyce Eller.
Here.
Dee Perkey-Pile.
Here.
James DeVito. Terry McLung.
Here.
Maggie Snyder.
Here.
We have five.
You got it. Thank you. Stand for the pledge, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Brings us to approval of the agenda. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I need to add Mr. Steve Beecham to the planning for nomination to position number one.
Excellent.
Also like to add Mr. Tom Walker under new business, number one, to talk about the fire pension board issues. He's here to discuss it, so.
Where is, what number will that be?
That'll be number one under new business. Move it to number one, so he can talk and get out of here.
Fire pension?
Yes. And that's all I have for my part. Anybody else? Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, sir. I'd like to add under new business, just to do a brief discussion, follow-up to the town hall meeting.
Number eight.
Yes.
Just give me a second on that or anything.
Yes, dear.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
And I'd like to table new business item number three. That was number two, the clean city ordinance. James is not here. He's down at the SWFco meeting, and he had some further information he wanted to discuss with that, so.
Do you second?
Second.
Second. That's the clean city thing?
Yes, sir.
That's all?
Tabled. Until next meeting.
Anybody else?
Hang on. Hold please. Okay, yeah. Sorry.
Okay, if not, all approve the amended agenda. Say aye, please.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carried. Moves us on to approval of the minutes for August the 12th, 2013.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any changes, deletions? None above? All in favor of the approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minister approved. Brings us to commission committee authority reports by terms. There again, I need to add Mr. Steve Beecham for position number one under the planning commission. Everybody has a copy of his application in their paperwork, so. And Beverly's here to talk? Yes, did.
If everybody knows Steve Beecham, is there any reason to postpone until the next meeting, or is everybody just on the way?
Counsel can do what they want to on this issue.
I'll test the water. Make a motion that we approve Steve Beecham for position one for planning.
I'll second.
Any discussion on it?
Can we do that right now?
You can. You don't have to, but you can.
You can, yeah. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mr. Beecham, you're in. Congratulations.
Tomorrow night.
Okay. Beverly, you are up.
I wanted to let you know that the planning commissioners are going to be going to training in Fayetteville on September the 5th and 6th. We are going to go do that, so that we can be better commissioners. Tomorrow night, we have a public hearing for a setback variance at 39 Benton Street. We also have a new construction review tomorrow night at 85 South Main, which is the, I don't want to tell you what it is, because I might say it wrong. I think it's the Blarney Stone is the name of it. And then, over the past couple of weeks, the planning commission has sent you many things that we have been working on, and we do need you at the end of this meeting to add some of those items to your next agenda, if you wouldn't mind. One is the rezoning of 80 Mountain Street. That never really got put in ordinance form. Number two is to remove 80 Mountain from the list of buildings in R1 used for religious purposes. Number three is addition of intimate theater as a conditional use in C3. Number four, we sent you multifamily dwelling ordinance. And number five, we sent you street vacation procedures. So when you all are ready to add those to future agendas, I'll be ready to bring you more information on those. Thank you.
Did you get a question?
Just one question before we do that. Number one, the rezoning of 80 Mountain Street. What are we rezoning if we're taking away the non-conforming religious purpose in R1? What are we rezoning?
Okay. 80 Mountain Street by ordinance was zoned R1. By court order, it was changed and zoned to C3, but it was never changed by ordinance, and after that court order, it should have been done by ordinance.
Thank you. That's what I needed to hear. That's right. Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you, Beverly.
I'm leaving.
Okay. No. Because we don't have any reports in the residence, as far as I know. CFC, none. Hospital, none. Parks, none. Historic district, none. Cemetery, none. Brings us to public comments. And here we have. First up would be Ms. Darlene Schrum. You're not here for, okay. Ms. Schrum? Hey, there you are. Here you are. That was me. It's the TV. Yeah, there you go. It's about a two-second delay or three-second delay.
My name is Darlene Schrum. I've had a retail business at the same location in downtown Eureka Springs since 1975. I am here once again to express my opposition to the Art Council's proposed closing of Spring Street to traffic and parking. I will be brief, since there have been many, have also, have been so many who have spoken in opposition to this proposal during the last council meeting. First, it has been very unfair to business owners and anyone concerned about this issue, who have spent their time fighting against it, and yet not being able to know when it's going to be on the agenda. I was told it would definitely be on the agenda during the last council meeting, but once again, it was not. We are starting our fall business season, normally the best time for Eureka's economy. We need to focus on our shops and not have to continually deal with the absurd and unpopular issue. I ask that you stop, that you stop this proposal once and for all, leave Spring Street open to traffic and to parking, and let us all get back to focusing on our business. I want to say thank you to the council for their work and the time spent on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Arnold Lehman?
Arnold Lehman, I have the New Orleans Hotel, and I'm really here for some of my tenants that are at market or out of town right now. We're very opposed to closing Spring Street. It would all but put us out of business for that time. There's no way to get to our parking, and it's bad enough as it is. And I appreciate your consideration of this, and also think about the safety issues that this is going to create. Say, if somebody gets hurt, there's a fire, you get the streets full of people, you can't get vehicles up and down it, and snare a street anyway. That's about all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mel Shipley. Just leave it open. Mr. Shipley, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Mel Shipley. I've spoken twice before, before the council, about the closing of the street and how much we do oppose it. I do not stand up here by myself. The majority of us do not want it. I just want to let you know that we are here tonight. We appreciate your time, and we hope that you do not close this street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Margie Anderson.
Need to put a bumper on it.
I guess so.
Morris, could you open that door or that thing open, so I can get a better view? Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
I don't know if we'll stay there or not. Hey, Margie, come on up.
Thank you. Margie Anderson, deja vu. I'm here again. I do want to thank you for your interest in this, and I hope that you will go with the majority of the shop owners who are opposed to this. Since last meeting, two weeks ago, I've thought about this, and I kind of reflected back when we had a fire in downtown Eureka Springs, when the Basin Park or Block Hotel, or, excuse me, backup, Basin Block Restaurant caught on fire in the late 70s. We not only had our own fire trucks, our own ambulances, but we had those from Holiday Island who volunteered to come and help us. And if any of you were here during that time, you know the chaos. I cannot imagine having tents, merchandise, pedestrians on the street involved in something like that. We do need to remember, we are over 100 years old. We are not brand-new. We hope to be up to code, but has anybody even spoken to our fire chief about the possibility of this? This is a serious situation. I do hope that you will consider that. And as I said before, it doesn't all have to happen downtown. We have many areas of the city that are beautiful and would lend themselves to just a wonderful venue for this. A lot of art shows are indoors at the convention center, so I suggest we leave Spring Street in the flow of traffic the way it normally is. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Tom Tharp. Tom, come on in.
Hi, guys. I'm here representing myself and Abundant Taxi. I was hoping Fuzzy would be here tonight, too. Ray Dotson is in town again, as most of you know, flipping his nose at the city, doing what he wants. He's currently down here on the corner parked soliciting business. Apparently, as long as you get a court order, you can cook meth on the corner, I guess. Listen, here's the deal. I've been doing everything by the book since 2000, when I bought the carriage business. I helped write the book. We helped create ordinances that were never there because of Ray Dotson, to regulate business, to make it fair for everybody, so that there would be a set of rules on paper that everybody could follow. We followed them. The other carriage companies that used to be here in Eureka, they followed them until they just were not financially feasible to operate anymore, and that leaves me. I still follow the rules every day, and I get tromped on by this guy. Abundant Taxi went through hoop after hoop after hoop legally, to make sure they are operating legally in the city. And now Ray Dotson comes in and just pees on their boots and says it's raining. I can't fathom why this is allowed to go on for this long. Why is the city council and the mayor not doing something about this? I understand he's come up with some kind of bogus injunction against you all. Whatever. He was never operating legally to begin with, and now he has an injunction that says that he can operate illegally as long as he wants. How is that fathomable in the United States of America, that I have to follow the rules, Abundant Taxi has to follow the rules, Fuzzy has to follow the rules, but Dotson apparently doesn't? Why does that work here? I don't get it. So if you all would please put something on the agenda later on tonight to discuss this, if it's legal, I don't know. The city attorney can discuss that if it's legal or not. Can you all do something besides just go, mhm. It's not fair to me, it's not fair to the other businesses in town that he's tromping all over. If this were happening to another bed and breakfast in town, people would be up in arms. If this were happening to another restaurant in town, people would be up in arms. It's just Tom, the carriage guy. It's just the taxi guy. Don't worry about it. Please do. Thank you.
That'll take care of public comments. All right. Moves us into unfinished business. Discussion number one is ordinance 2187, third reading, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
I think that was the one I was thinking I was tabling, and I made a mistake, because I didn't have my glasses on, but we'll just go with it. I do.
Maggie Snyder.
Okay. I would, first, I would, I found out from the city attorney, I asked the city attorney if he would add a clause in regards to this mandatory recycling against scavenging. I have talked with, oh, I forget what her name is, but she does all of this recycle stuff. She's based in the Fayetteville area. I don't have the word on there. But anyway, she deals with all this recycling stuff. She said if we're going to have an ordinance, which is making it mandatory that you do this, we have to include a paragraph saying, "No scavenging permitted." This has to be added to it, because otherwise, everybody's got their glass and everything else out, and since Barrio buys this kind of stuff, we wouldn't have anything to stop them from going through and just picking up bucket after bucket of glass, going to Barrio and getting the money for it, when the money that, this is a community effort of all this recycling. So if someone else takes away our recycling and they pocket the money, then we, as a community, are hurting. So we need to have added to this 2187 ordinance, a scavenging clause. But apparently, we all have to inform the attorney that we would like this.
Mr. Perkey-Pile.
You know, if somebody wants to come and take some bottles that are going to be recycled, and they get a little something out of it, fine. Eureka, that's fine. They're getting, they're getting recycled. It's trash. It's getting recycled.
Stealing.
Let me finish. The point is that this is one of the few counties that actually recycles glass and sends it up for Owens Corning to spin into fiberglass. And according to our, to Carroll County's solid waste manager, they don't make any money on it. Carroll County doesn't make any money on it. It's just a break-even. It doesn't go to the solid waste disposal site. So, you know, does it hurt anybody? Not necessarily, in my opinion.
Any?
That's it?
Mr. McLung, you had your hand up. Thanks.
Yeah. I can't imagine somebody wants to steer, I can't imagine somebody wants to steal a bunch of beer bottles, but, you know, if that's what they want to do, I, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Besides, I think we already have a pilfering, something on the books about doing that, right? Isn't there something?
There is a provision in our code that says that once it's placed for collection, that trash removal is not, you're not allowed to go through someone else's trash.
It's covered.
It's different.
It's not different. So, you know, but you can, you've got your opinion, and you're welcome to have it.
Maggie Snyder.
Okay. There's a difference in pilfering and stealing. If we are going to go to the trouble of making this mandatory, then what is the harm in one extra little paragraph saying scavenging will not be permitted? It's against the law, and the attorney can come up with the fine, because I know he doesn't like mine. But the point is, if we're going to do this, let's do it right the first time. So somebody doesn't have to go back just because we have something maybe said somewhere, whatever. Let's just put a clause in there. Scavenging is illegal. You will be fined. And the other part of that was, I would also like to have included, besides glass and cardboard, I did not realize, cans in plastic were not included in the recycling, commercial recycling. It is for residents. I did not understand that that was not included in the commercial recycling, which it by all means should be. I mean, bars either have glass bottles or cans, and right now it's cardboard, period. That's all that's done, and then this would be glass and cardboard. Let's do it right. Let's make it plastic cans, glass and cardboard, with no scavenging permitted.
You have to change.
Because that's money out of our pocket. If they take it, our break-even isn't going to be a break-even. It's going to be in the hole, because they're going to be getting paid money that should not be getting paid out.
Mr. McLung.
I don't think the city at this time has an avenue to collect the other items. And that's something that probably could be addressed, but, you know, I don't have the information on that right now. But this is, and I think that's probably a good idea, if that can be done, you know, pick the other stuff up commercially, too. And that's something we can certainly look into, to getting that done. But at this moment, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to place ordinance number 2187 for its final reading by title only.
Do a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Maggie Snyder, just, we got discussion. Go ahead.
Pardon?
Go ahead.
Okay. If we're going to do this, let's do it right. Let's postpone it till the next meeting. Let's have the city attorney make the changes where we add in the plastic and the cans. We can add in the scavenging, no scavenging allowed. We can do all of that. Let's get it done right, so it doesn't have to be addressed again. It's only got one more reading. He's not even here. And in the meantime, that also gives someone a chance to talk to the recycling people about if they would be willing to go along and pick up the cans and the plastic. We can get it all done at once, and I would vote the empty chair over there to talk to recycling, since this was his baby.
Mr. Mitchell, you had your hand up next.
It would probably be a good idea to hear from the recycling people if they are interested in commercially picking up those other two materials before we pass it on the third reading. I would be interested to hear that. And since Mr. DeVito isn't here, and I'm sure he would find that out, it might behoove us to just table this until the next meeting.
Ms. Eller, go ahead. You had your hand up next.
I somehow don't see people running around stealing glass bottles, and I wonder about enforcement of this. If somebody is sneaking some bottles into their car or something, I don't know, what, do the police come, does somebody call the police, and they come and arrest them for pilfering, and then we have to decide how much the fine is going to be, and we have to set that in the ordinance? I think we've come far enough along on this so that I would like to just simply vote on it as it is, and if we find that we have a problem with people pilfering our garbage, then we can amend our ordinance and put a fine to it.
Mr. Perkey-Pile.
Well, isn't this ordinance just in regard to recycling, mandatory recycling of glass, correct?
I think it is, glass.
It doesn't say anything about plastic or cans.
Okay.
Yes.
If any of that would have to be rewritten.
You have to change the whole ordinance.
It's just glass. It's not cardboard, is it?
Correct.
Glass and cardboard.
It says glass and cardboard. It's by the title.
Okay. Well, we already are doing cardboard. Okay.
So we're adding in glass to the cardboard. So let's add it all.
We've got a motion on table to go ahead and spend the rules and read the title only on the third reads there. Mr. McLung?
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to make any difference if we wait till, you know, enough difference as far as it goes to put it off for, till the first meeting in September, so I withdraw the most, I will draw the motion, that's, if that's all right.
Do we draw the second?
Yeah, I'll withdraw the second.
Okay. Mr. Perkey-Pile.
Mayor, can we have a little further discussion on this?
I believe so. We can, yeah. I mean, it's just 6:20.
My impression, well, when did we add cardboard to this?
It's always been there.
It's always been?
We add it to the last.
Mandatory, mandatory recycle.
Glass and cardboard, always there.
No, cardboard always there.
Cardboard and glass, always there.
Cardboard is, cardboard's always been recycled. It's not mandatory, but it's been recycled.
So I answer all of it's mandatory, but.
At all restaurants and bars operating within the city limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, are hereby required to participate in the city recycling program for glass and cardboard. Any restaurant or bar owner or manager who allows more than 10% by weight of his or her solid waste collection to be recyclable, glass or cardboard, shall be in violation of this ordinance, completely unenforceable. Thank you.
Okay, so we don't have a motion. We don't have a second. So the floor's still open for Mr. Mitchell.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this discussion until the first meeting in September.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? Maggie Snyder.
Did you want the attorney to set up the new extra?
I wanted just, just what I said. Just table it.
Well, then there needs to be table to do that.
Possibly, yes.
I would like to see it added in, that the attorney work up the furtherance, whether we amend it in or not, at least it'll be available.
The motion's to table, and we've got a second on it. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
All right, aye.
Okay, so it's 5-0. Okay, moves us on to discussion number two, ordinance 2188, be the third read, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, floor's open.
I don't know how to make that motion.
Mr. McLung.
I'd like to make a motion to read ordinance number 2188 for its third and final reading by title only.
Second.
Made seconded. All in favor? Oh, wait, we have to, yes, it's third, now, third read.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McLung?
Yeah.
Mr. Perkey-Pile?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
We have 5-0.
Okay.
Ordinance number 2188, an ordinance amending Eureka Springs municipal code to establish a 200-foot rule for all residential conditional use permits.
Thank you. Okay. Moves us on to number three, discussion land.
We have to pass it.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2188 on its third and final reading.
Okay, so you didn't spend the rules while it goes. You just wanted to read by title only.
That suspends the rules. That suspends the rules. Otherwise, you've got to read the whole thing.
Okay. So we're going to read the.
We just need to vote. Terry made a motion to approve the ordinance. There was a second, another, okay?
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
No. It's got to be, because it's the third reading. Sorry.
I'm used to hearing to suspend the rules, really. Okay, I'm catching on here.
Yeah, you are. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Perkey-Pile?
Yes.
Mr. McLung?
Yes.
5-0.
Thank you. Number three, discussion land bank ordinance, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open.
I see that, Mayor.
That he's here? Yes, thank you.
I see that our parks director's here. Bruce Lene, would you like to step forward and kind of talk about this?
Yes. Well, I was here to mostly answer any questions that you might have. One thing I did remember from our last meeting is that I think Mr. Mitchell suggested that our finance director would be added to this list, which I would be more than happy to support.
Mr. Mitchell.
Oh, I do have a question, Bruce. This ordinance and this process was initiated by whom? Not by person, but by the body, or?
I think the Parks Commission originally brought this, put this together.
So did this pass Parks Commission before it came to us to look at?
Yes.
So it did go through the committee, and committee passed?
It went through the commission in general state. There's been some amendments to it, but not anything significant.
So the Parks Commission hadn't solved this last draft that we saw?
Has not seen this final cleanup version. No, it's not.
Anyone else? Mr. Perkey-Pile.
will be, people will be notified that are adjacent to them?
I don't quite know how to answer that. I don't see this as being a real robust committee unless someone takes, you know, charge and wants to. We had a flurry of activity back a couple, three years ago, and then it just sort of waned. So I don't know. Like, of course, we'll have to get the committee together first and we'll find if we see if there's a champion there that really wants to put this together, then it may move fairly quickly.
Ms. up.
It, I remember from our discussion of Vacating Rock Street that, um, and maybe I don't remember this right, but that the city is not allowed to sell, uh, platted streets to someone, that, uh, the suggestion was that we, we sell the street to, um, the bricks and it was said that the city's not allowed to sell land. Um, am I confused about that or something? Because this indicates the resulting funds from the sale of unopened platted streets will be deposited in the land bank. Does that mean that the bricks can buy that unopened platted street, Rock Street? I'm confused on this.
Oh, there is a, there is a very, about a little over a quarter of Eureka Springs streets are owned by the city. That Rock Street, that section that was being applied for is, is not in that quarter where the, the city owns.
Okay, so Rock Street is not an unplatted street?
It is, but it, it's not, it would not be able to be sold. There's 320, there's streets in 320 acres of the city that the city actually owns. It was deeded to by the federal government. That particular street and that portion of that street is not in that zone.
Well, who owns it?
Uh, it's a, it's an easement that's been given to the city on the plat.
But there is not any, any record of an easement anywhere. Back even going to 1888, when the land was surveyed, there are no records of easements. So I assume that it was owned by the city.
For lack of a, for an easy way to put it, 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 there, actually, there is no easy way to put it. It is by the plat that was put together in 1893. That shows as being a city street, Rock Street. So none of these platted streets are owned outright by the city, except for those in the 320 acres.
Well, I'm not going to take up any more time discussing it.
Okay.
It's just very confusing to me. Doesn't make sense.
Mr. Mitchell.
In, I don't have the land bank procedure in front of me, but there was a section that talked about deeded, that the property had to be deeded. So is this land bank specifically to the 320 acres?
Most of the land bank.
Are you going out into the platted areas?
Most of the land bank, as it was first put together, was to deal with the city lots that are basically out in the hinterland, small, isolated pieces.
Okay.
That are, and I, in one of these discussions, I'll bring the map and show you.
Okay.
The little specks that are dotted around the city that the city owns.
Okay, got it.
Mr. McClung.
City streets, other than what's in that original 320 acres, are done, not today, just like they were then. And that is, the, the property line actually goes to the center of the street, just like it does on Deer Lane. The person, the property owners own to the center of the street, and they pay tax on that. But the county or the city, whoever, gets easement across that, and it's platted right away. That's what it is.
But doesn't this have?
Then they, no, let me finish.
Okay.
Then the city has control of that. They're responsible for that once the street is built. And back in the old days, the street, the city built the streets. That's not the case now. The individual has to build it. Anyway, regardless of that, if that street is never opened or, um, is opened at one point and then discontinued in usage, if the, uh, if the property owners on each side of that street want to, can petition, the city, the city still controls it from that right away. And that is a platted right away. Because that plat, as it was recorded, all those streets in there and alleys are platted so they belong, uh, to the community because they're open for anyone to use. And that's just the way it is, always has been, still is today, no different. And it's, and it's recorded that way.
I think you hit it there, that it, they, these are for public use.
That's right.
That, that they're not owned by the city, but they're for public use.
And, and a, and a, a right away can be given to the property owners, returned to the property owners, if all along, that strip, anyone that ever has access to that piece of land or that right of way are willing to do that. And in the case of Rock Street, they're not.
May I add one more confusing feature to this?
Sure.
Please.
Um, in the 1900s, this was, it was decided through Arkansas case law that the city could not sell these easements, just as we were talking about, Ms. Eller. And suspiciously enough, about five or six years later, there's about 70 or 80 leases that the city gave out for portions of streets. And my suspicion is that the city had decided that, well, if we can't sell these properties, we can get some value out of them by leasing. And they were leased for a variety of things, cash, a milk cow, a culvert that was built under a road. So the city decided there was some value that they could get by leasing them. That's legal. They can't sell them, but they can lease them. So that also is put in here, that the city, that funds from leases of city property. Lord knows what kind of case that would be, that we would want to lease something, but that option is also in here.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on this? If not, then we're moving on to new business.
Are we going to read this, or no?
This was just discussion.
Yeah, this is discussion, yeah. All right, uh, first on to my new business, Mr. Tom Walker addressing the fire pension board issue. Motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Mr. Walker? I think you're out in the hall. Would you come in? Here we go, fighting with that again. Come on in, Tom. How you doing, sir?
All right. Good evening. My name's Tom Walker. I'm a member of the local fireman's pension board. We're seeking a benefit increase, uh, and it's necessary that we bring it to you all to pass a resolution accepting our attempt. The amount we're asking for is $50 per pensioner. That has to be approved in Little Rock. A actuarial study will have to be done, and the actual amount that we get, if anything, will be determined by that study. Any questions?
I have one, Mr. McClung. Not for Tommy, actually, for Mr. Weaver, because I am a, I receive that pension, should I vote or not? Does it matter?
As to conflict of interest, it is your choice whether you believe it to be a conflict or not. But typically, if you would be receiving funds possibly from it, most would disdain from voting because of the potential for conflict.
Ms. Snyder.
Um, since I'm not totally up on this, how many pensioners do we have?
25.
And is this $50 per year, per person?
Per month.
Per month?
Yeah, there are 21 retired firemen and four widows.
Mr. Mitchell.
It's great that it goes to Little Rock and the actuary, and I understand that this pension is, is separate from city money and it's invested separate, so it's not.
We have our own funds.
It's not coming out of our general fund.
No, no, no.
So what do you need from us tonight? The resolution to go ahead and authorize it to go for the actuaries, what you're asking for?
Correct.
Is that resolution with our attorney or anything?
He'll have to go in.
Oh, it is.
Yes, sir.
I, I make a motion that we, we, uh, read and pass the resolution as proposed.
Second.
I've read it today. I don't need it.
Is there any further discussion on?
I'd like to read it.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll give my next one. Thank you.
Oh, one discussion. Does anybody know the financial viability of this pension fund at this point? Not that it's going to affect our general fund or the bottom line.
Right now, we have nearly over three quarters of a million dollars.
So you're funding?
And last year, we had $10,000 increase in revenues over expenses. And when the number of firemen, retired firemen drops below five, those monies will go to the state.
Not the city, the state.
Not the state.
I asked that question of the finance director at the last meeting, and he said that the pension funds were in good shape, that they were very solid.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any further? Yes, sir.
Uh, it doesn't say anything here about the increase, uh, being specifically $50 per month for, doesn't? I don't see it any, anywhere in here.
It's not how it's done.
That's not how it's done? Okay. That's how it was presented?
Well, he did, oh, I'm sorry. He did say that they set the rate. They were asking for that, but that this commission sets their rate down in Little Rock.
The actuarial study will do that.
Yeah, actuary sets it, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to give this resolution a number.
Second.
Already did.
I'd like to second that motion.
It's already done.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Well, I voted, I'm sorry.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Tom.
You're just voting on giving it a number and reading it, right? Passing it.
No, I think, no, I made a.
Is this for passage?
Yeah, I made a, I made a motion.
He made one without putting the number on it. He made one to put the number on it and pass it.
But I seconded somebody.
I made it the one to read and pass combo.
Yeah.
Sticking with that, then?
If you, if you want to amend.
I know, I don't want to amend anything.
I'll withdraw mine, want you to amend yours and say.
Amended to add the number of it, because we have to have that in there.
Give it a number and take away its name. Yes.
Thank you.
I'll amend it.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay, first, we have to vote on the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, brings it back to the original motion of reading it and passing it with a number, once she gives it to us.
The resolution number is 623, adopting Pension Review Board Rule Number Four. Whereas the local fire pension board has passed a resolution adopting the Arkansas Fire and Police Pension Review Board Rule Number Four, and whereas this allows pension plans with less than 50 participants to utilize the alternate cash flow projection evaluation method of determining actuarial soundness, and whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, along with the fire, excuse me, with the local fire pension board, certifies to the Arkansas Fire and Police Pension Review Board its understanding of Board Rule Number Four and the risks involved with the small group, and certifies its understanding of the risk involved with an alternate cash flow method. Now therefore, may it be resolved by the city council of City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that this council hereby approves the utilization of Board Rule Number Four for the local fireman's pension fund.
Okay. It is done. All right, that moves us on to number, the original number one under workshop and new business is the workshop for 2014 budget. Motion to discuss.
Motion discussed.
Floor's open. Mr. Mitchell.
The last time, the finance director, Lonnie, was here, and Lonnie does a superb job in, in that role and should be commended. He mentioned that he would have the budget ready for the first meeting in December, and I think it's my understanding then that we have only one meeting in December, and then we would have to pass it in January. Because one of the most important things that is, to me, that a city council person can do is sit here and assure fiscal accountability of the monies of the city, I think it would behoove us to have a budget workshop in which we can review the historical budgets, preferably going back as much as five years by line item to look historically, but if nothing, at least three years back. And then also on the concept of zero-based budgeting. It would be a good idea to have a budget workshop so that we can be very comfortable with our budget and not be surprised like Fort Smith.
Mr. Perkypile.
Um, are we, is the new software, budgeting software, ready to do such? To go back and have a three-year historical review?
No, I talked to Lonnie the other day about it. It is, it's not loaded, it won't be until late fall, but the other software is there, so there should be some ability to get some historical data.
Okay.
Line item.
You know what else? Ms. up.
Yeah, I think that there are some things that we might want to discuss in the budget. I think some departments might have a problem where they want money put in a different place, allocated differently, and I, I just don't, I'm, I'm not happy with the notion, although I, I absolutely have no doubt of Lonnie's capabilities, I'm not happy with just being handed a budget and saying, here it is, vote on it. I think we need to go over it. I think we need from, to hear from the department heads. I, I really think we do need some kind of a workshop or a meeting on this.
Mr. McClung.
Uh, I concur, and I, and I think that, uh, once we get our third quarter behind us, so I would say we get September's figures, well, really, I don't think you get them till November, but.
In November.
We need to do something.
But we need to do something, yeah, we need to do it in October.
Late October.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't even.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell.
And just one thought in advance of that, because we'll discuss it more at the workshop. It would be interesting to know at any point, have we ever challenged department heads to reduce their total operating expenses for the, for upcoming year versus just taking their historical data and inflating it by either the cost of living or something? I.e., has anybody actually ever said to them, we would like to see you come in on your budget 10% less than your total operating expenses? Then take a look at that amount of money that's there and potentially move that 10% reduction in most departments over to Public Works or other places so we can work on infrastructure? Just a thought.
Believe last year, they tried 20%. Last council tried 20% budget cut.
Tried, but didn't, didn't happen, right?
No, sir, it didn't happen.
Okay.
So I'm just telling you.
Well, I, I don't disagree, but I think we should have that discussion.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. McClung.
Yes, I propose that, uh, we go ahead and choose a date.
Oh, you want to?
Yeah, in October. Um, I think our last meeting of the month is, second meeting of the month's the 28th. So sometime in that week, before that, I would like to do that. In the daytime is fine. I don't care. I mean, it's.
How about Wednesday, October 23rd?
That Wednesday?
I think that's excellent. Yeah, daytime or evening is.
Anytime for me.
It's okay with me.
It doesn't matter to me either.
I'm open.
I think James is off on Wednesday, so it's perfect. It's nine o'clock in the morning, maybe. It's nine o'clock in the morning, make it last Thursday. No, not on the 23rd. Oh.
Well, let's make it the 22nd.
Yeah, that's not, it's at four o'clock. Yeah.
So, you do two workshops, okay. Pick a time.
I mean, that's, I can still do it. It's, those are usually done by 5:30. So, in the evening, or they can be, it can be done in the morning, it's fine.
About 10 o'clock in the morning?
That'd be, that's fine, perfect.
Everybody good, October 23rd, 10 o'clock in the morning?
Okay.
You want it in here or downstairs in the office?
That'd probably be best.
Downstairs? Okay, we'll do it in the office.
Be closer to Lonnie for anything he needs.
10 o'clock.
Well, it should include Lonnie, and then we will also need Lonnie to hopefully give us, have some-
Oh, yeah, yeah, he'll have to have some prep stuff for us, you bet.
And probably the department heads maybe should be there.
I'm sure they'll be working on their budgets. In fact, I know they're working on the budgets now, so. Any further discussion on it? Okay. You want to make a vote on the, on the times or just the general consensus?
I think we're good.
General consensus.
All right, good then. All right, moves us on to number three. Number two was postponed. It is addressing the closing of Spring Street, and I think we have Ms. Sandy Martin here again to speak for the Arts Council. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Come in, Sandy, how are you?
Thank you all for your time and your patience again with this topic. I know it's been, been an unpleasant one for all of us, and I just want to say that the Arts Council's intent on all this was not to create dissension or anything else. I mean, our purpose is to be a collaborative partner with economic development through the creative economy and to advocate for the arts and creative community that we have, and that was our intent, and it was to stimulate some business. We promised at the last public meeting that we had at the auditorium that we would compile the information and the input that we have been gathering since January of this year through July and present it with, to you with our observations and our recommendations. So, I'd like to pass around this short report and kind of go over it with you. First and foremost, when you look at these numbers, and I have the surveys that were filled out at the last public input, and I'm going to give those to Diane so that you can have it.
I think that's all, one whole set, right?
There are two, there are two separate pieces.
Okay.
Should have Euro Eureka and the merchant.
Yeah, there's two parts to it.
Okay. Anybody not have a set?
Should be two pieces. All right, one part.
Andy's the second part. Andy's, are you, part two? The whole thing.
I don't know.
I think, I think the earlier meeting exhausted me, my brain dead.
If you look through the numbers, you can kind of see that it's overwhelmingly in favor of closing Spring Street for some kind of a Euro Eureka concept, but we all know it's not that simple, and it's not going to work if there's any resistance or dissension with downtown merchants. And unless you all pass a law that legally said, that says it's illegal to ever bring the topic of Spring Street up again, history kind of tells us that it's going to keep coming up, and there may be a couple of reasons why. Number one, Spring Street is an iconic and unique brand for Eureka. It's what we think of, it's the heart and soul of the activities and the commerce that we have. Or maybe there's a good idea here somewhere that hasn't been able to see the light of day or be constructively flushed out at all. Or it could be a cry for some long-range planning and creative thinking. The merchants clearly, nor do the artists, don't want to take a chance of losing what we have, but we also want more business, we want more traffic, we want to compete with what's happening in the northwest corridor. So, the topic that comes up is Spring Street, but that may not be the issue. We think the issue is more of one of long-range planning and coming up with something that is uniquely Eureka. This was never an idea to have an art fair. This was a concept that was a unique experience for Eureka Springs. Some of the things that we're concerned about from the Arts Council standpoint is we're not creating fresh, uniquely Eureka opportunities for our arts community or our local community. Bentonville and Fayetteville are doing a bang-up job of doing it. We've had some of our originating in Eureka Springs events that have been going to and premiering in Bentonville and Fayetteville before they come here. Bentonville has a very strong, I don't know if you've seen it, but their city plan is extremely strong for an arts district, a market district, and residential and a culinary area. There's no longer a need to come to Eureka Springs to buy or meet our artists or buy their art. They're available throughout Bentonville and Fayetteville. We're also in a peculiar situation now that we're not, we're not able to just schedule an event around arts or culture or anything else and not have to worry about other schedules and other calendars. We now have to consider and look at their calendars first and schedule ours around them to be competitive. The Arts Council is very concerned that we might be on the edge of losing our ranking as the premier northwest Arkansas arts destination. Through July this year, Bentonville has shown increases of 12.8%. Branson is up 5.6%, and we're down 2.6%. Again, we don't need another parade or a festival or an art fair in a parking lot. What we feel we need and what we were trying to do was come up with a unique Euricon tourism experience citywide that would engage the local community and compete effectively at a new level for revenue and for tourism. So, we have a couple of recommendations to bring to you and, and also a question for you. First one is maybe consider reinstating the Tourism Task Force under the direction of the City Council and have them come up with unique experiences that are, that are Euricon only and can't be duplicated anywhere else. The Arts Council still believes that there is a concept and a good idea somewhere in there, and again, I stress citywide, that could be done around the Euro Eureka theme that would be very, very unique and not duplicated by anybody else to Eureka Springs. It may focus more on performance arts or visual arts, and certainly, we wanted to create an after-six experience. So, the Arts Council would still like to be a collaborative partner and possibly a facilitator to work with a bunch of groups, including merchants, to see if there is an idea there that could be mutually beneficial. The second sheet that I gave you that is the Euro Eureka concept is pretty much what we have culled out of the input and the discussion so far. It's just a rough concept, there is no idea. We just took some of the best ideas that we thought would work. And finally, my question to you is on the issue of the closing of the street. Originally, we started this under the opinion that if we secured the mayor's approval and the department heads' approval, which we did originally, that that was it, and then it was brought to you because of the upset with the merchants, which we certainly understand. So, my question is, is it the city councils to, is it in the code that the city council approves opening and closing streets for what event? And the question is, does that apply to like when we have the May Festival, the Arts Parade, or any of the other parades that close the streets from like two to five or six?
That's an interesting question. I can't wait to hear what the City of Arkansas says.
I don't know.
I've never been tasked with researching that issue, and I don't know if there is an answer that I can give you tonight. If you want to task me with looking at the code, I will look at the code, but you have to task me.
I, I, that has to obviously be all of council, but I'd certainly like you to look into that question because that concerns me. And then I have some other comments after that question. I don't know about the other-
Can I say something here to say? City Council has purview over all real property in the city.
Okay.
Now, real property is all city buildings, all public buildings, and all city streets. Now, back when we did close the city streets for the Blues Fest, we came to the council asking, and it was only from like 6:00 until whatever time we could get everybody on the street at night. It has since then not, not been a big issue because we don't have the same kind of traffic that we had back in the early 90s. So, I can make the decision, and it'd be a simple decision for me, but real property to me is under the purview of the City Council, is the way I understand it. So, is that, is that correct, Mr. Weaver?
Well, all real property does belong at the purview of the table. I mean, you decide for selling, leasing. As to closing the street temporarily, I don't know if it applies to that. It would, it would fall under, I suppose, a lease, very short-term lease, but certainly the mayor has the power to close it in a situation of emergency, under his police power, but I don't think we're talking about an emergency here.
No, it's not. Ms. Snyder, go ahead.
Didn't Bruce Levine just tell us that the property owners own to the center of the street?